I will call to order the January 25th meeting of the common council. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the roll call. Ms. Clark, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McIlvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche is absent and excused as Alderperson yours.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone this evening that wished us to speak? Do we have anyone this evening that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone in the public that wished us to speak this evening? Not seeing any, we will then proceed with Agenda Item 5, which is approval of minutes from the January 11th council meeting. And those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure?
Overapproval.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky.
Pick one and pass it.
Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Under mayor's business this evening, we have Chief Coughlin, who will be providing us an update on the police department. Chief, please.
Just going to give you a summary of 2015, primarily a summary, and then if you have any questions outside of that, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Just passing around a one document, which is a spreadsheet comparison of 2014 to 2015 calls for service. Personnel is a big part of what we do, so that'll be my first topic, staffing levels. Our 2015 goal was to attain or authorize the level of 23 sworn officers. Our 2015 budget, where we had one new police officer approved, and also in 2014, we had a new police lieutenant approved. So, we were in 2015 trying to fill those positions. So, we started 15 with those two vacancies. And then under recruitment, we initiated a police officer recruitment in December, the end of December of 14, and subsequently hired two police officers from that certified list. The first was Runkel. He was the new position, and then Schultz, who was hired as a result of the promotions, filling the promotion from a horseman to lieutenant, and then a police officer to sergeant. We initiated the lieutenant promotion in December of 14 as well, and subsequently promoted Mark Horseman from sergeant to a lieutenant effective February of 2015. And then we initiated this sergeant promotional process on February 27th and promoted Fairman from police officer to sergeant on June 8th, 2015. So, we reached our authorized strength in December after those police officers were trained. We also filled a detective assignment, which we treat similar to a promotion. However, it technically is not a promotion, it's an assignment. We have two detectives, one that works the day shift, who is more permanent, and then our evening shift detective, which we added about three years ago, is an assignment where we take an opportunity to develop a patrol officer. They compete for that assignment. We move them into that assignment where they receive additional training and experience working hand in hand, side by side with our day shift detective for a while, and then we assign them to the 3 to 11 shift. So, we now have a detective on days and 3 to 11 evenings. That assignment was opened in June of 15. It was filled by Mitch Zolkowski, who was assigned from patrol, and then Matt Lovell, who had been in that position for about three years, returned to patrol. And that's part of the, a big part of the purpose behind that assignment is to develop staff that then can return to patrol where they're more effective and better prepared to investigate, follow up on their own crimes, and solve them prior to ever having to forward them to a detective. Then our PSL assignment. On April 27th of 15, the assignment was opened because of Aaron Truscott had served about five years in that position, and he wanted to return to patrol. We then opened that assignment, which was subsequently competed for as well and filled by Matt Morris. And that was effective for both of those in September 1 of 2015, at which time we also worked out a two-year PSL successor agreement. PSL is a police school liaison officer with the school district. So, we got up to full staff about mid-December of this year, and it lasted for about four weeks. And they received a resignation by Phil Wickowitz, who resigned effective last Friday and returned to Wisconsin State Patrol. He cited a couple of reasons for his departure. Two, one of them being difficult schedule, and second being additional promotional opportunities that we couldn't offer. The schedule in summary is we rotate officers from different shifts within a six-day work cycle in an attempt to save overtime. And he was the, one of the least senior officers, so he had to move more frequently. And is married, has several children, and too difficult of a schedule for him to move around. Several six-day cycles, we had him working three different shifts. And he said he, at the Wisconsin State Patrol, he was guaranteed a straight 3 to 11 shift, and that appealed to him much more. So, we were sorry to see him go, a very, very good officer, but we understand his decision. And then we currently have one vacancy. The PFC authorized recruitment process to begin at their last meeting, which was January 14th, last week, or the week before, and we intend to begin the recruitment by the end of this week, to at least advertise. But it will take us until May to hire a new officer, and then four months to train him or her, and additional six weeks before they're ready for solo patrol. So, it'll take a while. I've come to the conclusion after 13 years that the only way we'll reach authorized strength is if we hire up one beyond where we're authorized to. So, but when you have one vacancy, it's hard enough trying to fill two, so. Field training, just a bit about field training, what an officer goes through. Runkel and Schultz received approximately four months of their field training, where they work with a certified field training officer of this department. And eventually, they progress through a four-step phase and are certified for solo patrol, and that happened in December, as I mentioned. And then they take approximately two additional months where they cannot work by themselves. They have to have at least one other non-provationary officer on with them. So, it takes about six months before they have an impact on the schedule. And then calls for service is a snapshot of that, that's the spreadsheet that I passed around. Statistics, I could give you enough, more statistics than you probably care to look at. But instead of reciting all of them, I just picked the ones that I thought you'd be most interested in and did a comparison of 14 to 15. You'll see some of the changes on there that stand out. If you have any particular questions later about that, feel free, I'll try to answer them. Training, training is a big part of what we do in trying to stay current, relevant. Training, that's useful and appropriate, and just a bit about that. We, this past year in 2015, we partnered with the school district and Fitron EMS, trained all of our sworn staff from our consortium. We're one of five agencies, McFarland, Manona, Oregon, and Stoughton, who participate in a training consortium where we share instructors, equipment, and curriculum. Manona was our latest partner to join us in 2015. So, this past summer, we did training at the, at the high school, where we brought all of those partnering agencies and their sworn staff in. And we worked on different active shooter scenarios that required a police response and a warm zone insertion. And in essence, what the warm zone insertion was, was establishing a perimeter on the school while there is still an active threat inside, taking a portion of that school and creating a warm or safe zone and attending to the injured, and triaging those that were injured. So, we, it was a, it was a good learning experience for all of us, and we got a lot of help from Fitron EMS. It was a real good opportunity to work together. And then we hosted CAPMAR training. CAPMAR is an acronym for Capital Area Police Mutual Aid Response, where we developed a program countywide this past year, where they have, I think it's eight levels and six officers per level. So, you actually have predetermined a little more organized and definitive mutual aid response, where you select agencies around you that are closer in proximity and are able to commit resources to you. So, for example, we have as many as eight levels. We could request two levels, six officers per level, so 12 officers respond to assist us at the high school for an event. And we may be able to get those 12 officers there in about 15 minutes' time. So, that's the basis for that CAPMAR, that acronym that we use. So, during this training that we conducted at the high school with the active shooter, we were able to train on that CAPMAR response as well. So, it was a valuable training opportunity for us, and we took advantage of. And then I mentioned our training consortium. We train, state obligates us to train 24 hours a year. We train a minimum of 40. And our partner agencies, I mentioned, we hold five sessions of five days of training per year, so a total of 25 days. We have to hold five days per session so that we can accomplish the training without breaking the bank for overtime, filling shifts and rotating people around, especially our night and evening guys, because we typically train on days, but sometimes it's in the evening during low light. So, during those training sessions, we, every training session, we qualify with handgun and rifle, and then other various topics that we train in our defense and arrest tactics. We use a firearm simulator, which is basically a 3D machine video of different scenarios where we judge response time with a laser-activated handgun and measure an officer's command of the, of the particular scenario and voice commands and response times in decision-making. Fitness for duty, mental illness, active shooter response, warm zone insertion, and ground fighting were some of the topics that we, we trained in last year. A bit about criminal investigations. I didn't highlight any particular case because of, that's difficult to do. Most of them in 2015, if they're significant, are active, so I tried to avoid that. But just a few comments about criminal investigations. Drug investigations, we continue to experience an increase for 2015 over, over 14. We responded to a few drug overdoses in 15, however, none of them resulted in deaths, deaths primarily because of a quick response and the current drugs that are used. And yes, Roona, like all other communities in the state and probably country, we're not immune from, from the drug problem, and we've seen our share as well, so. Current events and trends, gangs. We continue to work with Dane County Narcotics and Gang Task Force. Several agencies contribute staff that focus on gang and drug investigations in the county, so it's primarily staff by Dane County and City of Madison, but suburban agencies contribute staff to that as well. So, they basically are an intelligence center for us, and their sole focus is on gangs and different affiliations, and that's a full-time job in and of itself. Our, most of our gang intelligence comes from the high school, the high school population. A small percentage of the high school population. Our records management system, which is MPSIS, it stands for Multi Public Safety Information System, where we partner with Sun Prairie, Fitchburg, Middleton, and Manona to share records. We really do some neat stuff with that consortium, with our partnership. A lot of our increased efficiencies come in the way of electronic citations from squads, electronic vehicle crash reporting from squads, electronically transfers municipal citations to our municipal court, allows officers to access our in-house records and other partners, agencies, in-house records from the field, from their squads. We recently, in the past couple of years, invested in some Sell Bright phone system technology, where we, our detective serves as the coordinator for. This consortium searches cell phones for evidence, and we house that equipment. So, and that's some neat technology, what we've developed, a lot of probable cause off of that technology, and then, of course, our license plate recognition equipment. And then, last topic here is emergency preparedness. Most of what I'm to tell you, share with you, we did a lot in 2015, and most of that credit goes to Lieutenant Dave Drescher. He did a lot of work on fulfilling a grant that we received from Dane County and Wisconsin Emergency Management, through Dane County Emergency Management, from Wisconsin Emergency Management, I should say. And it was a two-year grant, so 15 was the last year of it. We carried out that second year of a training and exercise plan. We did a homeland security grant application submitted to Department of Military Affairs via Dane County and Wisconsin Emergency Management. We sought funds for our EOC functional exercise in the city and a full-scale active shooter response exercise at the school. The grant request was approved, and these exercises were fully funded. The exercises in 2015 were built off of the training received in 14 and involved City of Roona staff as primary responders rather than secondary responders. And just a few bullet points of what we accomplished there. March 15th, city staff gave a presentation and panel discussion at the governor's conference in Milwaukee pertaining to our tornado response in June of 14. A tabletop exercise relating to an active shooter in a school setting was completed on March 19th and facilitated by Wisconsin Emergency Management. Emergency Operations Center functional exercise was completed on May 7th, which involved city staff from a variety of different departments coming together to manage a critical incident in the Emergency Operations Center. Additional training and incident command systems and Emergency Operations Center practices preceded the exercise. The exercise was facilitated by a private consultant. Full-scale active shooter training exercise occurred on July 28th at Badger Ridge Middle School, involved police fire EMS, school district, Dane County 911, Dane County Sheriff's Office, Dane County Emergency Management, Madison PD, Salvation Army, and a variety of other mutual aid partners from the immediate area. The exercise simulated a real-life event, which included two bad guys and more than a dozen role players with lifelike injuries applied, and many more non-injured actors playing the role of students and teachers. The exercise was facilitated by the consultant and designed to be challenging. And then we focused on, and accomplished a reunification drill on July 30th at Blackhawk Church in Madison. The school district and public safety partners simulated the reunification of students and parents as a continuation of the full-scale exercise. And lastly, Capital Area Police Mutual Aid Response protocol was tested on July 28th as well, and this exercise involved more than 20 area officers and supervisors who were requested via mutual aid for a simulated critical incident in the city of Roona. So, it's just a snapshot of 2015. It's not intended to be all-encompassing, I'm trying to keep it short, so. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Good, Ms. Doyle, please.
Just a point of clarification with the data you provided.
Yeah.
So, the difference between call for service at the high school and incidents at the high school would be?
Good point. Calls for service are, any incoming call that we take is a request for assistance. An incident is something that is a little more substantive, where we actually have a name, property, a vehicle, something to attach to that call for service becomes an incident. So, incidents are more substantive, that's why the number is smaller or less there. Yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Yours, please.
Well, the one big area I think you left out, chief, is all the work you do for the city, especially behind the scenes with the liquor licenses, getting subdivisions ready for signage, working with my committee, and just keeping, keeping all the paperwork and everything moving throughout the city and ensuring the department runs smoothly. So, I just want to say thank you for an often thankless job.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Chief, thank you for your report, for everything that you provided, including the calls for service. I do have one question on the calls for service. And that is, on the 911 disconnects.
Yes.
Is that, are those calls that have gone into the county dispatch, and the county is unable to reconnect with those individuals to see if there actually is something occurring?
Yes.
And then the city, if the county is unable, or dispatch is unable to connect with them, then there's follow-through at the, at the police department?
Yeah.
Either you attempt to call them, or there's a visit or something?
Yes, exactly. And then we, there is enough data here to choke a horse. So, I am careful not to include too much, but within those 911 disconnects, you break it down into two different levels as well, where those that you can establish a location for, landlines, or a static location with the cell, are those that are roving and moving where the location is general, are much harder to locate. So, yeah. Some of those turn into calls for service, but a small percentage.
That, to me, that, it really jumped out at me because 485 for the year 2015, so more than one a day that you're dealing with for those. And that's, for the most part, when people accidentally dial 911, they'd be contacted by dispatch, so that doesn't even include those.
Yeah.
That's a significant number of disconnects.
Yeah, and that number obviously has gone up with the advancement.
Sure.
And in technology and cellphone usage, where it's very, you know, it has its upside, where most people have a cellphone and have easy access to calling 911, but when they're moving or roving or not knowing where they are, that presents a challenge as well in time, whereas traditionally, 911 calls were landlines, and that was the value of the landline, is you knew exactly where that call came from, so.
Right.
But more upside than downside, for sure, so, but the numbers have gone up.
Any other questions for the chief? No, thank you again, chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
That will conclude my report for this evening. We will have the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. Just have a couple of updates this evening. First of all, back on January 14th, the city hosted the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission meeting, which held a public hearing on the city of Roona's Urban Service Area Amendment. That amendment includes areas that would be added to the area where we can extend municipal services for property owned by Epic Systems in our north neighborhood, in the southeast of the city for an expansion of Technology Park, and area owned by the school district on the south side of the city planned as a future school site. The Capital Area Regional Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Urban Service Area Amendment. That recommendation now goes to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources that will have the final authority, and we're anticipating action from the Department of Natural Resources by about the middle of February, according to the timeline that they have provided us. There were some conditions of approval that were included as part of that, as well as several advisory recommendations. Staff had reviewed the conditions, were comfortable with those, and comfortable with the advisory recommendations as items that we would consider as well. So, hopefully, we'll have news of final approval coming in the next few weeks. This morning, the city and school district and town of Roona participated in the quarterly IDAC meetings, which are quarterly meetings between the school district and area municipalities, initially started to talk about development-related projects. One thing I wanted to report out of that meeting is that the schools indicated that on February 1st, they're planning to have a discussion at the school board about the process and planning for a potential future referendum for new school or new schools, and that the timeframe that they're working under tentatively would be shooting for a referendum possibly in April of 2017. At least, that's been identified as likely the earliest date for a potential referendum on a school. And there'll be more information to come following their meeting on February 1st, but it sounds like they're looking at different options for putting together a committee that would be involved in reviewing options and then continuing to work with their architect and construction manager throughout the summer and into the fall. And then a couple of meetings that we have coming up. This Wednesday, the 27th, there'll be a meeting of the Dane County Cities and Villages Association that will be taking place at 5:00 PM in the city of Fitchburg. And then this Thursday, there'll be a meeting of the DaneCom governing board at 4:30 PM at the city of Madison. And on the agenda for that meeting is an update from the contractor, an update from Dane County on the status of the project, and an update on the operation of maintenance payments. The latest timeline that we've heard for the DaneCom system is that they're expecting to have it fully operational by late 2016. Be available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Burns? Ms. Doyle, please.
Is there also a meeting at Epic, a neighborhood meeting at Epic on Wednesday?
Yes, there is. There is a meeting that Epic is hosting this Wednesday, where they've invited neighbors in the area to listen to any concerns from neighbors and have a discussion with them.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I wanted to add, and I know that Mr. Burns was going to be talking about the action taken by CARPSY. I attended that meeting, and from the city staff, we had Mr. Burns, Mr. Sayer, Mr. Reader, and we had three of the AECom staff there. And I think, without any question, they were very well-prepared for that meeting. Mr. Sayer did most of the responding to questions, but everybody that was there really made the city proud. I mean, we were well-prepared. We were able to adequately respond to any questions or concerns that they might have, and the end result was that it was a 10-0 recommendation coming. So, I made sure that that evening and again the next morning, I thanked the city staff for the professionalism and all the background work that they had done, because they were fully prepared for every single question that was asked. So, thanks again. With that, we'll go to the engineer's report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. There is no report for public, for public improvement projects tonight. It's winter, and stuff is pretty well shut down. But I would like to say it's been a long road. This will be my last official meeting as a city engineer. I will be retiring on February 5th. I would like to thank the city for having the confidence in me over the last 25 years to allow me to be your city engineer. As we say in engineering, there's a lot of water that's gone down the pipe in that time. Much of the work that I have done in the city, many of the designs are underground, you don't see, but there are projects that you do see. East and West Verona Avenue, North Main Street, South Main Street, many of the subdivision streets. So, a lot of that, a lot of the newer streets in the city, I had my fingers in. Going forward, Jeff Montpass will be the, will be the face sitting up here. I've appreciated all the time I have spent here in the city. I've enjoyed it, and as Bo Ryan recently said, I'll see you down the road.
Any, any questions or comments for Bob?
I'm an old man.
The, I know I've mentioned it before, Bob, and, you know, the, the way that we look at it as city officials, you're not really, you're a contracted employee. You're part of the team, part of the partnership, and that relationship that we have, and the historical, you know, knowledge is going to be very hard to replace. Nothing against Jeff, I know Jeff's going to do a great job, and AECom's a great firm. But you're right, so many of the things that you did for the city are things that a lot of people never see. But you just did so many good things for the city, and we wouldn't be where we are today as a city if it wasn't for your efforts. So, I'm going to stand and give you some applause.
Thank you.
So, now we will move to committee reports, and we'll begin with the finance committee. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $491,544.36.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McIlvery, please.
In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, of course, one of them being to AECom Technical Services, $55,491.72, second. And by far the largest bill this month would be to the- Second, and by far the largest bill this month, would be to the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District for our sewer service and sewer plan review, $229,553.52. And third, to the Municipal Property Insurance Company for our 2016 property insurance renewal, $36,321.
Are there any questions for Mr. McGilvery or the committee, city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $491,544.36. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Is there anything else from finance?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next, we will move to public safety and welfare. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a Class B beer and reserve Class B liquor license for Toot and Kate's Wine Bar located at 109 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years, please.
Toot and Kate's LLC has applied for a Class B beer and reserve Class B liquor license for Toot and Kate's Wine Bar located at 109 South Main Street. These licenses will allow them to serve wine and beer at their business, which is planned to open in February. Ryan Beekler will be the appointed agent for the licenses. On December 14th, 2015, the city council approved a conditional use permit to allow for an indoor commercial entertainment land used for Toot and Kate's at this location. The liquor license application will be, was considered at this evening's Public Safety and Welfare Committee, and we voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Questions or comments for the committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve an application for a beer and for a liquor license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years, anything else from public safety and welfare?
Nothing further.
Thank you. We will move then to Park Recreation and Forestry Commission, and I understand that Mr. Walker is going to do, provide the background before we have a motion or discussion, so. Mr. Walker?
I got an email saying that you were, you had some information you wanted to provide, but I can read the document if you want to start with that.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, the Park Recreation and Forestry Commission recommends approval of the agreement with MSA Professional Services for the 2016 update of the city's five-year park and open space plan in the amount of $13,500. This project includes an inventory and analysis of current park facilities, identifying future park locations and facility needs, a review of existing policies and ordinances, and recommendations for improvements over the next five years. The plan serves as a tool to guide future growth so that the park system continues to meet the needs of the community. The plan is also an important component of the overall city master plan and maintains the city's eligibility to receive state and federal grant funding. Staff solicited proposals from four area planning firms for the project and received two proposals from MSA Professional Services and AERS Associates. Both firms have extensive resources and experience in all aspects of municipal planning and have done satisfactory work for the city in the past. Based on the anticipated cost of the project, the commission recommends approval of the MSA proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky, and are you making the motion to recommend approval?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval.
For approval. We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Ms. Ricky, anything to add? Mr. Walker, anything to add?
I can add a few things, thank you, Heather. Our last adopted plan was in 2007. We started the planning process to update the plan in 2012 and got as far as the draft plan, but it was never, it was never amended to a final plan and adopted, so we're actually almost, what, nine years outdated on a plan. The good news is, between 2012 and 15, we didn't have a whole lot of new development, but with the north neighborhood plan coming soon, I think it's more important than ever that we have a good plan in effect by the end of this year, so that moving forward we can at least have a roadmap to new park improvement.
Excellent. Mr. Linder, please.
Two questions, so what prevented the other plan from being implemented, and when do you think this one will be ready to be voted upon?
Yeah, the last plan primarily was funding. We went with a low bid on the project, and honestly, the firm didn't have a whole lot of experience with park planning, but we were willing to give them the benefit of the doubt. They did a good job, but they underbid the project, and when it got down to crunch time, I basically refused to pay any more bills without getting some more results out of them, and we just kind of came to an impasse, and so that plan was never completed. That firm was not invited to bid on this current update of the plan. So, I hope that answers your first question. Second question, the timeline we've laid out starts actually in a couple of weeks. The firm will be before the plant, the park commission at the February meeting, so we'll get started right away. What the goal would be to have a plan adopted before this body for adoption prior to the 2017 budget, so we're looking at, hopefully, the last meeting in August, first meeting in September, to have a finalized plan ready for adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, can I assume that you'll be identifying potential new facilities that, that the city may want to be putting into place, or at least putting into the, the long-term plan?
Yes, absolutely.
So, and, and when do you, when do you expect that you would have some of those, are you going to do like we did last time, we sent out a survey and?
Yeah.
And pretty much took guns from population?
So, what we have is, the public input portion involves a community survey, which is sent to randomized households based on, you know, we'd use the water utility. There's also, they plan to do an online survey, so you'd be able to go on, people that don't receive a survey and give input that way. And then we'll have a public meeting as well, probably sometime in May, June. Then they also, the, the firm will look at, you know, what kind of national standards are. I know there's a few up-and-coming sports that we probably don't have facilities for, so they look at it from a regional standpoint, and what facilities we have and what kinds of things we should be looking to have. And then there's also staff and, and commission input as to, you know, I guess what kind of groups locally we see coming to beg for facilities the most. So, all three of those will play into what our recommendations are for the next five years.
So, key components going to be probably just promoting the, the potential for input from the community in general, because I know last time we, we were somewhat unsure about the validity or the, the depth of the, the results that we got from it, just because it, it didn't seem like we had enough sampling on it, so.
Yeah. The public input part is tough, because we send out, you know, a neighborhood of 1,000 surveys, and we usually get back about 25%, so we've got a sampling of 250 people in the entire community. And then we advertise and promote a public meeting, and generally, if we get five to 10 people at that meeting, it's a good turnout.
Well, I guess just moving forward, I'm wondering if, if staff can maybe brainstorm and how we might get the word out to, at least for the online portion of the survey results, because it seems to me that'd be a great potential for you to get a lot more valuable information and...
It is, and, and one benefit we have now that we didn't have before is, most of our rec people sign up online now, so we have a database of all those people, and we can email them and solicit their input. So, I expect we'll get a lot of people that'll do an online survey. You know, it's a little clunky anymore when you get a stamped envelope and you got to fill out a paper survey. If you can go to a SurveyMe site in two minutes, click, 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 and go through, I mean, it's a lot quicker, it's a lot handier, and I expect we'll get a whole lot better response that way.
Great, thank you.
And that actually is one of the first recommendations in meeting with the consultant that they had, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, David, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the motion that is before us to, is to approve the agreement with MSA Professional Services and the City of Roona for the update of the city's five-year park and open space plan. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, anything else from Park Recreation and Forestry?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, do we have operator licenses this evening?
Nathan Cook, Melissa Schmidt, and Catherine Frankie for Pasquale's, Jennifer O'Brien for Francois Oil, Danielle Johnson, and Christian Neamy for Quick Trip.
You've heard the applicant's names, are there any motions at this point?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Questions or comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approval of the operator licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are on to announcements. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. A huge thank you to the City of Roona Police Department. Last week, they sponsored a breakfast of eggs and coffee for our crossing guards, a group of people who take care of the crosswalks and get children to school and home again from school at the end of the day, and, and it was really nice to see the, the police department take a moment to pat these people on the back and listen to their comments. They solicited these people, they gave them time to talk, and, and there were a few that were very outspoken, and others who just gave their support, but you know what? They all said the police support them very well. So, I was very happy to see that, and I certainly enjoyed the eggs and coffee, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Are there any other announcements this evening? I'm not seeing any. A motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1497.15]